Kikosol. Perfect. So happy International Girls in ICT Day. My name is Mewa Park and I am Web's Coordinator at Women's Empowerment Principal Secretariat at UN Women. So, thank you so much for joining us to celebrate this special day. The aim of this day is to encourage young women and girls to pursue their studies and careers in science, engineering, technology, mathematics, and other fields to help them achieve their dreams. To celebrate this special day, the Web's Secretariat have prepared a very special webinar to talk about a career path in ICT, in software testing. We've invited members from International Software Testing Qualifications Board, or ISTQB in short, as speakers of today's event. So let me go over to today's agenda. So we will first hear from some introductory remarks from NFLT Head of the Web's Global Secretariat at UN Women. Then we will hear a presentation on Exploring Software Testing by Claudia Dusaz-Ziger, President of ISTQB. Then we'll move on to the panel roundtable that will be moderated by Anna. We prepared a poll during the session, so please do participate and I will introduce the panel shortly. And next, we will have a Q and A session and then closing remarks to close today's very special event. So I'll continue with some logistical reminders. Please feel free to write your questions to the panelists in the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen throughout the webinar. If you'd like to communicate with other participants, as you're doing right now, please use the chat function. It's important that you ask your questions through Q and A function so that we can easily capture your questions. Your questions will be answered during the Q and A session or through the chat anytime. We will answer these. I also wanted to remind you that this webinar is being recorded and later will be uploaded to www.webs.org, website to share with the general public who couldn't make it in person or virtually today. And lastly, we will have a short evaluation survey that will pop up when you leave. Please take some time to answer it as we do take a good look at it at the result to improve our future content. Now, to get us started, I'd like to invite Anna to deliver her opening remarks. Anna, floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mewa, and thanks everyone for joining us today. It's kind of a funny thing that my camera is not working today on this special day of Girls in ICT. But hopefully by next time, it will be fixed. So congratulations, everyone. This is a year, a day of celebration and also to take stock of where we are with women in ICT, girls and women in ICT. And this year's theme is leadership. And that's why we have brought together some amazing women today to show some leadership in this area. It is really to the choice of leadership as the theme is to emphasize the critical need for strong female role models in science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM, in short, careers. According to the International Telecommunication Union, ITU, women now fill about forty percent of high-skill occupations globally. However, women's participation in ICT-related field continues to be low. So that's also one of the reasons why we are holding this webinar today to give you some ideas. And women are nearly absent from software development, engineering, technology research, and also in academia, as well as the highest levels of policymaking. They also tend to leave science and technology jobs at higher rates than men. And we can discuss later what the reasons are for that. While there is a gender gap in leadership in every industry across the world, the largest gaps are to be found in this STEM field. Women in ICT often find themselves in junior or support roles rather than in managerial roles with little opportunity for advancement. And they're also less likely to hold an executive position, becoming ICT entrepreneurs or be represented among science and technology policymakers. So to thrive in STEM, girls and young women need to be exposed to women in leadership positions, fostering inspiration and breaking down barriers that hinder their progress. And that's what today's webinar is all about. The Girls in ICT Day 2024 aims, the theme of this year, aims to address these challenges, encouraging empowerment and leadership development for a more equitable future in STEM. So today's webinar aligns with these objectives and I'm very excited to hear from our group of fantastic women that are eager to share their experiences and give you some insights into how to join them in the ICT sector, in particular in software testing. So back to you, Mewa, and I'm very excited to hear from our amazing women that are here today.
Thank you so much, Anna. And now, let me introduce you to today's speakers. So we are joined by Claudia Dusaz-Ziger, ISTQB's President. She has an extensive experience in software testing for more than twenty-five years and she is a passionate advocate for women in tech. She's particularly interested in test management, the continuous improvement of the test process, and the professional training and further education of testers. Then for the panel session, we have Millicent Orera from Kenya and Raifa Tanggon from Indonesia. Millicent is ISTQB Kenya Marketing Director and she also serves as Regional Director for Quality at Farm Access Foundation focused on ICT4D. She focuses on building awareness and momentum for digital health in East Africa to best stakeholders such as the private sector, government leaders, institutions, donors, and development partners amongst others. Raifa is Vice President of the Indonesia Software Testing Board. She also founded the Indonesia Software Quality Assurance Initiative back in 2016. ISQA promotes best practices and supports those transitioning into software testing careers, including individuals from non-IT backgrounds. So now, I'll invite Claudia to deliver her presentation. So Claudia, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Warm welcome also from my side. I'm very happy and thrilled actually to be here and to introduce you to software testing. We had discussed before the webinar that we should set the frame because testing is a general term and I think it is important that you understand what we are talking about. Mewa, you would be so kind and just go to the next page. If you want to develop a product in software, whether it is a meeting system like Zoom as we're using now, whether you have some software, an app for your mobile, or some software for a car, or whatever, you need to talk to the customer, you need to make sure that you understand the requirements, you need to think about the architecture, and then you start the programming. So there is a lot of steps that have to be taken that lead to the product. Now, testing comes in to make sure that the product is actually fulfilling the requirements, the functions that it is supposed to do. So as a tester, we are looking at the software at different stages. You can start when the software is completely entirely programmed and integrated. So you could do an acceptance testing, whether the user can actually use it, you can use it, look at the usability. You could also go down a couple of steps when you start programming and you could do the unit tests. So as a software tester, we're looking at the quality of the product and we want to improve the quality and make sure that only high-quality products actually enter the market and that everybody will be happy with them. So this is what we're talking about. And given the fact that testing can happen at different levels, also at the product level, we have a lot of people that come from different areas. It's not only computer scientists, we also have people from life sciences, we have people from physics, we have people that study geology. So a lot of different people can come in. And depending on the product that you are testing, for example, if you have like a computer tomograph, it would be nice if it was medical engineering, or if you know some physics. If you go into a different area, it would be good to have a different background. So software testing kind of naturally lends its way to people who want to enter that area and you don't have to be a specialist or a programmer if you want to start in software testing. So I think this is what is so valuable and so interesting and which is really thrilling about the entire job. Personally, I also think looking at the software in the different areas, you get to know a lot of different things. And that's also very exciting, from medical domain over mobile apps, over cars, over trains, everything. Everything by now is. So software testing, we're taking care of the quality of the product that is developed, that can be software only, or it can be software and hardware that we're talking about in entire system. Now, what is ISTQB and how does ISTQB fit in there? When we started to look into software testing and ISTQB was founded 2002, so it's twenty-two years now, software testing was not a topic which was taught at the universities or at the colleges. So people that were actually doing software testing were learning on the job and were just, yeah, learning as they were going along. And back then, a number of specialists, a number of experts from industry, from universities came together and said, "We need to come up with a qualification scheme. We need to tell people what they need to know if they want to become software testers." And definitely, they have to be as bright and as smart as the programmers. And this is how ISTQB was started. ISTQB is a certification scheme for software testing. We define syllabi or curricula, what you should know about testing. And it's not only the core area on software testing, it also covers supporting processes like configuration management or defect management. It also covers a little bit of psychology because if you tell people that their product is not doing what it is supposed to do, that it has bugs, they're not always entirely happy. So this is what we are looking into. We're trying to help the software testing community and improve the qualification in software testing. And since its initiation in 2002, it has been really a success story. By now, we have member boards coming from almost all over the world. I'm very happy that we have Raifa with us who is from Indonesia. Very happy that we have Millicent with us who is coming from Kenya. We have more than sixty member boards worldwide. And the certification, which has the same value all over the world and which also means that they all know the same techniques, they all speak the same language. We reached more than almost one million certificates. So by the end of the year, I hope that we can achieve the, or get the one million certificates, which would be really great. So it is wildly industry-recognized scheme for the qualification of software testers. Of course, you can imagine that over the last twenty years, the situation at the universities and colleges has changed. Nevertheless, if you want to have a head start into software testing, looking at the information that is provided for free at the ISTQB website also helps. And then about two years ago, and Mewa, it would be nice if you just go to the next slide. And two years ago, we started an initiative which is called Women in Testing. And I'm very happy and actually I'm very proud that we started to do that. We wanted to draw more girls, women into this area. We started out with a series of interviews of well-known or strong role models throughout. For that series of interviews, we got very, very good feedback. People really enjoyed it and said that we should continue. We are now on the way of having webinars, I'm sorry, not webinars, panel discussions at different conferences. We were at the conference in Nairobi where I had the chance to meet Millicent. We will have the next Women in Testing Panel Discussion in Budapest where we have our General Assembly next week. And in that context, when we started to reach out to other women in testing, to other women in IT, one of our members from Georgia, Nadia, said, "Oh, there is the UN Women Empowerment Program." And this is how we got together, how we matched up with Mewa and with Anna. And I'm very happy that we are here now. And we will continue working or running this initiative, Women in Testing. And the focus for this year will be Women in Testing in Africa. And let's see what we're going to do next year. But I'm also very thrilled and very much looking forward to a good discussion and especially also to the feedback through the Q and A session.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Claudia. I've learned a lot about testing during your short but very informative presentation. So thank you so much. So now, we are going to move on to the roundtable discussion and I'll hand the floor over to Anna. So Anna, over to you.
Thank you. So as I said, it's an exciting opportunity to hear from some amazing women. And we have Claudia that you just heard from, Raifa Tanggon from Indonesia, and Millicent Orera from Kenya. And they all have their own individual experience. So I'd like to perhaps start with asking each of you to mention a little bit about yourself. Why did you choose this career that you're in? And how does your day-to-day look like in software testing? So I see, Claudia, you have your mic open, so maybe we'll start with you and then move to Raifa and Millicent.
Yeah, I can start. No problem there. When I did my computer science studies and I came from the university, I was looking for a job back at the university. I did not do any software testing because it was not there yet. And I actually chose the profession of software testing more or less by accident because I was looking for a job close by where I live so that I could pick up my kids. They were kindergarten, they were small, so I had job interviews with two different companies, five minutes by car, and at the end, I decided to start at a small company. And I am from Germany, so just to set the geographic triangle here. I started at a company called Inbus and they were just doing software testing. And I had to start on the job. And my very first days, my very, actually the first three, four, five weeks, I was just doing manual testing, really looking at a product and doing manual testing. And from the manual testing, I moved to the next step, test automation. And from the test automation, I moved to test management. And from the test management, I moved to test process improvement and also to training. And I started to look out for further qualification. And this is where I came along to ISTQB and I started to work at the German Testing Board and now finally at the International Software Testing Board. So by now, my day-to-day is quite different than from the beginning. Right now, I'm giving a lot of presentations, I'm doing a lot of management, mostly managing my projects, making sure that they are delivered on time with the quality that I want to. But I'm still also very much reaching out to our new colleagues and trying to get them in. I'm also teaching a lecture at the university in order to bring that knowledge already into the education system so that they can come to us with the knowledge already ahead. So yeah, my path is really, at the beginning, very accidental. But then I started to love it because I'm a very curious person. I would get bored to death if I would have to do the same every day. And switching from one domain to the other, switching from one project to the other is something I like quite a lot. So from medical domain to automotive domain to banking and insurances, I've been working in that industry for more than twenty-five years now. I wouldn't say I've seen it all, but I saw a lot. And I'm still curious doing more stuff.
Yeah, curiosity is actually one of the key skills that we need today in today's world. And it seemed that it served you well and that you managed to have a very, you know, different type of experiences, but also that you had a little bit of a career progression. So it's not that you start in one area and that's where you are kind of continue throughout your career, but you seem to have been able to move into new areas. And I think that's important. That was also one of the messages in my introductory remarks, that we don't want to see women kind of stuck at the very initial area. But this seems to be a really great opportunity to move in here and also to move from different type of software, as you said, in different industries and in different type of software.
And Anna, actually, if you are interested in technology, there is also the good chance to move from technology to technology because cloud services is something that came up. AI, that is a topic I'm currently dealing with, which is really thrilling and exciting. Everybody's talking about AI, AI augmented software testing, AI products. So yes, there are, I think in software testing, there are a lot of opportunities where you can really, well, improve is the wrong word, but move from area to area, what really interests you. It has a lot of opportunities.
Yeah, no, thank you for this. And actually, we have, I think, an AI assistant taking notes from this meeting. So maybe we need to test and see how it works.
Yes.
So Raifa, what about you? How have you come into this career and how does your day-to-day look like?
Well, I guess, let me go back a bit before I tell you about how I chose my career. So I actually came from a small town called Manado. And when I got a scholarship to study abroad in Canada, then in the US, that was like a dream, you know, from a small-town girl. So fast forward to university where the situation, I needed to choose a major. I knew I liked anything to do with computers for some reason. I like gadget, tech gadgets. So I thought that, you know, I should probably choose the fields in computer science. But then I told my father this, that I want to choose anything about computer. And he told me that, you know, you should probably choose business administration because, you know, according to him, it would be easier to get a job after graduation. So yeah, long story short, I end up keeping a secret from my father that I actually chose IT major with a concentration in business information technology. Well, in my mind, technically, I studied business, like what he wanted me to do. Well, yeah, Asian parents. But yeah, so fast forward to now, that was still one of the best decisions I think I took because I ended up working in QA fields. And now, through all the lessons learned, you know, while studying and working abroad, I started my own company in the fields of software testing and then also became one of the member board for ISTQB. So definitely, starting a business with little to no network, and I don't come from a wealthy family, you're gonna have to figure out how to make things work. So since I was in college, I kind of knew I wanted to have my own business. And then, so subconsciously, I kind of like, okay, let's see if I can start, prepare myself, you know, and learn something. Maybe the one that I took, the business classes that I took in college, it helped me somewhat. And then when I couldn't get my visa, I was studying in the States, right? So in 2014, I couldn't get my working visa. So I came back to Indonesia at that time, really not willingly because, yeah, there's, I really want to stay there because I worked there, you know, and then everything was settled. So then I came back to Indonesia and that time I already became a QA. And then I was actually hesitant because I didn't know whether there's actually a software testing field in Indonesia. Because that was like in 2014, yeah. So but then, I guess that was the silver linings because I thought that, okay, this is nothing like, I actually need to go back. And then I meant to go back to Indonesia and apparently started the biggest QA community in Indonesia called Indonesia Software Quality Assurance. And hopefully, one day, we can improve and shape the QA ecosystem in Indonesia. So yeah, so to answer like my day-to-day is definitely not typical anymore. It's not like something like you can, like I do any testing much. But I still like to learn. I keep on learning, be curious because, you know, technology is always changing. Every day, there's new things. So I keep on, you know, stay humble, learn things, learn new things. Working with, like Claudia said, working in several different domains, it actually helped me learn a lot of new things. So I'm very, I'm very excited actually and I get to meet Claudia. I haven't met Millicent. I hope I can see her next week. So yeah, that's pretty much how my journey up to this point.
Thank you so much, Raifa. Fantastic. And congrats for being an entrepreneur and being one of the women tech entrepreneurs. I think this is really fantastic. And yeah, we hear from the audience that it's an inspiring journey. And I believe also things happen for a reason. So you were meant to come back to Indonesia, which is a beautiful country, and make your business over there. So but again, I think the two words that you mentioned was lifelong learning and again, being curious and how important that is to progress in this field and I think in all fields. So thank you. And we'll move further to Millicent. Same questions to you. If you could talk a little bit about yourself, how you choose this career and how your day-to-day work look like today. Over to you, Millicent.
Thank you, Anna, and greetings. My sincere apology. I put my video off because I'm traveling. I'm in between travels and the connectivity is not very nice. But my story starts at a very interesting point that initially, I actually had nothing to do with IT. I started with the development sector. And when I started with the development sector, we experienced quite some challenges. One of the things, good to mention, it's based on health, on the health sector. And we saw quite some serious challenges that needed us to do things differently. And our focus was to be able to reach a mass market. Then looking at the mass market, we're like, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna scale this? How are we going to really ensure that what we are doing is quite impactful? Then, one of the things we decided is we decided to work on a platform, on a digital mobile platform that will be able to reach the mass market. And when we worked on this platform, what was interesting is we had to deep dive a lot on the IT sector and really understand all the issues of testing, all the issues of development. And interesting is that it was also bundled with aspects of quality because we said, okay, now we want to improve our quality. And how can we use artificial intelligence and other algorithms to be able to measure and improve quality? So I found myself really gaining a lot of interest in terms of software testing and ensuring that all this can be able to work well. Then I was able now to actually do a course on that. And as I progressed, I wouldn't say I'm there yet. I can say that I'm in a journey. I continue to learn. I continue to even still advance and really be sure that I can be able to understand and still advance more in my career in terms of IT. But one of the things that I decided is, I'm very good in marketing. I said, "How can I be able to advocate? How can I be able to advocate for others?" And one thing that I'm passionate about is women empowerment and ensuring inclusivity and diversity and using the gender lens in terms of approaching issues. So I decided, what do I do to be able to ensure that I can have or really advocate for more women and more ladies also and girls to be able to join this? And what motivated me to do that is because thirty percent of the women in Kenya are the ones who are actually, thirty percent of digital technology positions in Kenya and a small percentage of roles such as software developers, engineers, and IT managers are actually held by women. So this was really a motivation to me in terms of what can you do? How can you speak on behalf of others? How can you really use your voice to be able to really ensure that more women can be added? And how can we add our voice to that? And that is why I found myself doing this career. Then I saw an opportunity to join ISTQB from the Kenyan front, the Kenya Software Testing Association, which really also does, which really, really does also a lot of technology and software testing and quality assurance. And that is how I found myself doing this. Good to mention that also in Kenya, I'm very proud that the one who leads the QA, just like you, Raifa, is a lady, a young lady. So it's quite exciting that we are seeing more and more women and young ladies getting into ICT, either for development or even just for the, really, really as a career in itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Millicent. And this really shows that we have now three women that have come to this industry from three different, different paths. And through education, through random needs, I mean, not random needs, but needs from a mother to be close to her children and through a health. I mean, not random needs, but needs from a a mother to to be close to her children and through a health. Uh sector and development of of technology. This is uh really fantastic, and thanks, Millicent, for for being such a champion, for getting more women into uh to this industry. So we'll move, uh I think meanwhile, is this now when we are launching the the poll?
Yes, correct. So to make this session a little more interactive, we prepared a poll, so I'm gonna launch it and we want to hear from you. So I launched it, Anna, and uh over to you.
So what is the most significant challenges that women in tech face in your country? Uh and we have five options. Lack of access to education and training, unconscious bias and stereotypes. Limited representation of women in leadership roles, gender pay gap and unequal opportunities for career growth. Or something else um that you might have identified. It seems like unconscious bias and stereotypes is something that it's strongly preventing women in this industry. So maybe we can hear a little bit of reflections uh from our uh panelists today. Um if you have any. Any tactics or anything that you've seen in your companies or that you know, the policies, practices that you put in place to. To really address uh stereotypes and and um and how those look like for you. Yeah, it seems to be the leading one. We also have the limited representation of women in leadership roles. Which is what we talked about, the theme of the of today in terms of leadership and lack of role models. Uh not so much lack of access to education and training, actually, it seems to have opened up for for women that choose to do so. But the fundamentals seem to uh from the responses that we have, we have forty four percent unconscious bias and stereotypes. Uh we also have a suggestion in the chat uh as a other category, lack of understanding of the benefits of a career in IT. And different career paths. So maybe that uh will open up a little bit today into the software testing. But anything, um also our panelists, if you'd like to add something on the lack of understanding of the benefits of a career, if you want to add. Any anything that you have seen as a benefit from, in addition to what you already mentioned. But I think uh meanwhile, I think we can uh close the the poll. I think we have some, uh we have sixty three percent uh participation rate. Yeah, I think it has stopped, so I think we can uh. Uh close the poll, and we also have another suggestion here in the chat. The most common thing that interests women from getting into software testing careers is also the lack of networking in this industry too. So I really hope uh Claudia, that this is an opportunity also for us to open your network to. To our participants today, and and maybe we can talk a little bit about how that could look like. But if if you want to address a little bit of the points that our uh audience and and our particip- participants have raised. Uh in terms of the the current landscape of uh ICT and the challenges around it.
Well, I would answer the career path in software testing perhaps at the beginning. I think showing that software testing is a career that you could choose, and I think in in, if I just look at my. My career, you can see the different paths, and then you can even specialize in different topics. AI or whatsoever, there there is a career, and it doesn't end with being a manager there, you could go as a um. Chief, all the way up to CIO, so that you really take care of the entire IT business quali- first perhaps first quality assurance and test. And then the IT business, that is definitely possible, you can even have your own company like Rafa, right? Who is the CEO of her own company. But looking back at the ICT landscape, at least in Germany, and I was doing a little poll on the company I'm working for. The number of girls or women that are working there is still relatively low, so. If I take all the bookkeeping and secretary and human resource HR, if I take them all out and just look at the engineers. We are about twenty percent, not quite, eighteen percent, which is really low. And I think what we need to do is we need to reach out to girls, like today for the Girls' Day. We invite, today at my company, we invite them, we have a group of twelve girls that are actually doing a bug hunt. So within a product, uh within a product, they're trying to find as many bugs as possible, as many mistakes, failures as possible. And they're having a lot of fun, so I think we need to raise the awareness that there is a profession. In IT, in software testing, that can be fun, which you can really enjoy, which is never boring. And that you really can have a career there, and I think that is very important. We need to show up the possibilities, whether it is the Girls' Day or initiatives like Girls Can Code, or whether it is. Support mentoring coaching in the STEM areas, like in mentoring during the university. Or even at the last classes in college, I think that is really important, and we need to. Kind of broaden the focus of the girls or the young students, that they can also go into this area and that they are as capable as men there.
Great. Uh Rafa, anything to add on this, on the landscape of ICT and challenges? And and uh the points that were raised by our participants?
Um I, you you know, the forty percent uh doing about uh unbiased, unconscious bias. I believe, that's uh something that it's, it was something in my mind all the time when I need to present something. Even with me, started my own company in software testing. But uh each time I go and try to present uh something myself, or trying to present to clients. I will have to think so many days, I have to think a lot of things, just to understand or just to see. How can I get into mostly, actually, the the audience are mostly uh men? So my voice, sometimes I have to tweak my voice. It's interesting how I need to tweak my voice just to get them to listen to me. And then it's not like uh I just encountered this now, but this is something that. Um I encountered this actually without even noticing. But uh sometimes uh if I present something, you know. Uh it's very hard, you know, sometimes women, when they 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 voice, their voice are too loud. Maybe because they're too excited, but we became uh, oh, this, this is, this this woman is bossy. So the bossy thing, like we have a lot of label under women. Um just um because we're trying to, you know, present something, we're trying to show our ideas. But um I I get you, I understand what you went through, because I also went through the same thing. Uh with all the challenges, even though I know I I'm still um with Claudia and Millicent. You know, I'm still in the early stage of my career probably. But I already went through several different things, just to get through um discussion, just to get through my ideas to uh people. So how do I do it? I, how do I manage it? I just uh try to make sure that I understand the topics, I understand what I'm trying to um represent. So it seems like I have to learn twice or thrice as much than, you know, uh than my counterparts. Just so that, um it's not like we're trying to get respect, but it's hard, you need to earn it. It seems like you have to earn the respect. So yeah, definitely, um this is something that we discuss a lot, even within the community. Like, how can we talk to the developer? So women usually is like, oh, you're wrong, uh your testing is wrong. Uh uh or sorry, you you have a bug. So mostly, even in development world, mostly are uh male. So if you come and then say, hey, you uh you your your code is broken. Then how are you gonna talk, you know, to these developers that they make? They probably, you know, forgot something and, you know, and then they make a mistake, but it's a mistake. So in those kind of thing, that was something, actually, I'm so excited that when I uh joined and then I started learning about ISDB. And then there was actually a topic in CTFL, uh one of the certification, that there's a way to to inform. Our, the developers, how to inform, how to communicate, how to talk. So that's, yeah, that's what I, I, you know, my my experience so far in the uh to answer the poll, yeah.
Great, thank you, Rafa. Millicent?
Yes, yeah, thanks, Rafa, that you say that. What what I normally see is um. Actually, an assertive type A behavior may be praised in a man, but seen as aggressive in a woman, as you are actually just saying. And that's quite interesting. I was even just going through some some documentation and research and. Uh UN has done quite a lot in terms of really sharing some of the data and some of these issues happening and. One of the things I also saw from another research is that it indicates that men are hired based on potential. Whereas women are hired based on what they already have achieved. So women quite literally have to have more to prove, and I can speak and confidently say that as a leader. That I have experience, it I've had to do double or triple what I see men do to get to the level where I am at now. So but notwithstanding, what are some of the things that we can do to be able to support and even just mitigate some of these issues? One of the things we can do is that, we need to really ensure that we do not downplay our skills. If you're skilled, you're qualified, and you're actually able to assert assert and really. Be able to share what you really need to communicate, then it's good for us to know our worth and not to settle for less. And uh one of the things that I can say is that uh what we see in Kenya is more women are getting into quality. Quality assurance, QA, and they even getting, as they get into QA, they see now they need to actually even. Deep dive into all that, all other aspects of ICT. So I believe as women, we still have a lot of um, a lot, a a lot to be appreciated. I also see that mentorship is very important. As women who have gone ahead of others, we need to be able to mentor uh the rest. And the young, the people who are still in the career, as well as just be able to advocate. And that's one of the things that I really speak out very loudly and say, really, let's ensure inclusivity, let's ensure that. More women actually even accessing this these trainings. And uh also notably, I think the issue of role modeling is very, very important. For us to be able to ensure that we can have more women on these issues of the stereotypes. And be able to really reduce, if not completely, just add. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on that, because I think, Millicent, you're absolutely right. I think we need to lead by example. We need to show that you can actually do it and just have young girls or young students or young women. Show them that it is possible, and I think that is something that was missing, at least back when I was at the university, all the. CEOs were men, there was, I think, uh not one woman that actually reached that level, but it is possible, you can do it. And you need to be, I also share that experience, you need to be at least twice as good as the men. So you need to.
Yes.
A lot of work and you need to be sure that you're doing the proper stuff, but you can, you can advance, it is possible.
Absolutely, and I I will even say if, if there is no one existing, a networking group that can really advocate for women. You start one, and ISDB Women in Tech is really, really uh taking the lead and doing that and ensuring the diversity. Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about that, maybe Claudia, how to become a member of the the Women in Software Testing uh Network? Uh but what are the requirements for that? And I saw also there was a question about. What is actually the pathway to get into software testing? And one of our participant has studied uh, you know, uh technology at the university. And has never really found the entry point to this, so if you could talk a little bit about the pathway. And and how you can be a member of of this network of women in in software.
Yeah, I think the pathway to software testing is um if. I don't know where that lady or that participant of the webinar came from, but if you are working in an IT. Yeah, in an IT company and you're developing a product. And it's pretty much like in the beginning, some people are developing, but there has to be somebody who really takes care of quality. Is the system doing what it's doing? Is it doing it fast enough? Is it easy to use and all this stuff? And if you want to get into that, you can, you, I think you just need to raise your voice and say, I I would like to do quality assurance. And then start in testing, and you can start at different levels as as. You can do already the programming, the test automation, but you can really also start at the manual testing, that you have a look at the product and then really start. Um I saw in one of the questions also, how can you do it, or how can you experience it, and do you need a lot of experience? Uh not necessarily, not necessarily, you can ask for an internship and try it for a week, a month. And see if it suits your needs, if it suits your curiosity, you know, we we typically say. Good testers are the girls and guys that broke their toys in order to see how they work. So what do you have to do to actually bring it to to break, and this is the way how you find bugs? So go for it and just ask about quality assurance, because in some way or the other, they need to take care of it. And the way into the software testing network, we are open for all professionals, for all all ladies that are working in this area. And we would be happy if they would come to one of our panel discussions or to the conferences and really join in. If you are working in that area or if you want to get into that area, you know, we have a mixture of people from. Ladies or girls that are just coming from university and who start their working career. We have people that have been in the industry for thirty years, and this is the beauty of the approach, you all get together. And you share your experience, you get some tips, what to do, how to advance, what to tackle, and this is really the beauty we. It's networking in the best sense of the word, we support each other.
Great. So uh let's go into a little bit more on on uh your specific regional focus we have today. Africa, we have Asia, we have Europe. Uh if you could talk a little bit about the situations of of women in IT in your region. And how you have specifically worked to overcome these barriers? I mean, you talked a little bit about it all already, but if you have any anything uh that you would like to add, and maybe this time we can start with Millicent.
All right, thank you very much, Anna, and I just want to share about Kenya, which is interesting. Our digital technology advancements, uh which really is focuses on mobile money transfer application. Referred to as M-Pesa, M-Pesa means mobile money. This has led our country towards teachers of emerging digital economy. But uh besides that, one of the things that I see is however the long strides. Uh in the move towards a fully fledged digital economy are not reflected in the digital technology workforce. With regards to gender balance. So that is the scenario that we are facing, almost you can see in Kenya over one hundred and nineteen people. It's one of the things where the registration, all of them have a SIM card. It's oversubscribed, so in terms of digital uh money and economy, we are very good. But in terms of ti- digital technology, we see ourselves really struggling, that's according to Communication Authority of Kenya. So one of the things that we see is that, as I mentioned, that women occupy less than thirty percent of these digital technology uh jobs. And they're underrepresented in science, technology, engineering, basically the STEM. Uh however, I just want to give a very positive thing, that the the one of the ladies who chairs is one of the governors, actually our leadership, government leadership. They were really uh looking at how do we include more women positively to be able to focus on this. To focus on ensuring that they are actually included, they are actually heading the industry. Which is very important, as she also has experience in that regard. And when I look at some of the organizations and initiatives uh that are helping girls to get into technology in Kenya. We have the Women in Tech Makers, we have the She Called Africa, we have the Powerline Projects. We have Empower Her, we have uh several organizations, I believe even the likes of uh. Of uh the UN. Of uh the U N, I believe also you're really focusing in terms of that. And I mentioned also about Tech Sister Kenya. So these are some of the initiatives that people are looking at, how do we ensure that we can include more women in Kenya? As well as uh networking events and workshops that are just being organized. Good to mention that today I'd also been invited to a university uh to talk to young ladies. In I C T and unfortunately I wasn't able to join, but I sent someone. So we also have the Akira Chicks, quite a lot of programs that are now reaching out uh to be able to ensure that. Women can be included and notwithstanding the hackathons as well and coding bootcamps. To be able to reach out to girls. So we are, we are doing something, but we are not yet there. But we believe that if we continue and really are able even to really converge such um webinars. This will really have a lot of impact and can be able to really advance and help us further. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Millicent, and thanks for all these great efforts. Uh I think all of this together, uh it it girls in the next generation. Will see technology in a different light than um other previous generations. So. Raifa, anything from you from the Indonesia, Asia perspective?
Um so actually, i- if I see it from the Indonesia perspective. Um we have several organization, actually, community. Uh there's uh Generation Girls, there's uh Girls Who Code. So there's actually several initiatives uh that was, it's pretty much came from community. And then, but then now uh the government has started actually, you know, take a look at it and then really try to grow it. So that more and more girls are get into code early uh in the beginning. So like the Generation Girls. They 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 do a code uh camp, bootcamp, can I think? From age like uh elementary school age. So they they started, they they now started early. But the the thing with Indonesia. We are islands, so many islands. And then. Majority of the time, the initiatives always in the capital. So it's always in the Java island, unfortunately. But with, for example, with um I S Q A, the the community that um. That I like I built, it's pretty much we're trying to go past the Java island. We're trying to go, now we're going to Bali. And then we're planning, we're trying to actually go to different islands. Because the thing, Indonesia um is not. Woman is not, is very in it uh unequal. And then even just the. The islands, because the island itself is, everything is unequal, everything is in the, in the central, in the Java central. So that's why um the I T community, uh it's always started from Jakarta. And then goes to other cities. Now, in terms of even salary itself, salary, we are. Uh according to the data uh by the Ministry of Finance, we are thirty-three percent less actually than uh our counterpart. And so when I was working as a Q manager and head of Q A at that time. I would say less than ten percent actually asked for promotion and or demand for more pay from women. And now, out of all the people that I worked with, um most of the female are not working anymore. Because, you know, there's, you know, there's agriculture in my, in my country where, you know, males are the breadwinner and then. You know, female are, you're supposed to be taking care of the family. And then after they, you know, they, let's say they give birth, they, it's very hard for them to enter the labor. And you know, enter the workforce anymore. So um there's definitely a lot of challenges, a lot of challenges. But like I really, you know, like what Millicent said before, you know, just start it. If you see there's an opportunity, start it. Love, like how, you know, it's like how I did it in twenty fourteen. I saw there's nothing, there's nothing about software testing. There, I mean, there is a software testing jobs. But I didn't see it in twenty fourteen in Indonesia. So then. I, you know, twenty, twenty fourteen, I was thinking about it, twenty sixteen, I started. Because it, see, it took me two years still to think about it and start it. So um. So that's why it's a big challenge, definitely big challenge in Indonesia. But there's hope, there's always hope. Because when I became, uh I should credit this actually to. My F P of Engineer, when I was working and I got a position to be head of Q A. Out of hundred, four, hundred and sixty-five Q A. Um at a time, uh we're working uh for e-commerce company. And then the F P of Engineer, actually, Mas Iba, if you watch this, I I should credit it to him. That he actually, I asked him, why did you choose me out of so many, you know, good candidates out there? And then so he said to me that, you know, I want to see more female leaders actually in Indonesia. Because I have a daughter, and I quote, I have a daughter, I want, I want her to grow up. And see that women can do anything. So that's why, you know, this is something that, there's hope, there's hope, there's, there's hope. But you just need to push forward.
Great. No, thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. Uh Claudia, we have also a number of questions. So what I thought, since we are running a little bit against time. Uh to uh bring in the the somewhat similar questions. Uh so I thought we'll we'll weave them in if you have anything to add specifically for Germany. And Europe and and I think also the the U S. Uh you could do so, but I think the the questions uh from the audience uh are quite interesting. Um one is, and I will take a group of them, so you can all uh listen because they're quite similar. What do you think about career shift programs for women from other sectors into I T? Uh and then where can we get beginner experience in Q A? If companies are already looking for people with experience, even if that can be done remotely. So I think that 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 is a little bit of uh a repeated question. Like when you see uh job vacancies that do require a certain number of experience in this and this area. Um how how do you get in if you are just at the beginner stage? Uh somebody is interested to know specifically for uh South Africa. If there are any bootcamps, opportunities to learn to become a software tester in South Africa. Johannesburg specifically, um any recommendation, you can also put it in the chat if you have any links or. Any recommendation for that. Uh we have Shaima who is saying that uh. As a self-taught software tester, we found that the most challenging aspect of entering into the industry. Is that companies are requiring several years of experience. So that's kind of coming back. Uh which is a lot of uh uh barriers uh for those that are self-learners. And particularly for you, uh for women and for junior people. So how can women specifically enter into this field and and uh without the typical two to three years of experience? Uh and similarly from Sri Lanka, uh we have an H R professional. Who has been also self-educating herself to be a software uh Q A engineer. Uh and is striving for a certificate with I S T Q B. Uh and some people are saying, oh, it's too late uh and to enter into the industry. Because she's already, um I mean, she's thirty-three, so I think that's pretty young. Uh so may maybe something you can say to that effect, that uh what do you think about ageism? Uh in this uh industry and um but there there was a little bit slightly different angle to it. Um is it still relevant to do this uh in terms of the ar- uh artificial intelligence? It will people still be relevant to do this type of work? Uh and then there's some compliments to you for for your great work. Uh but um I think these are some of the the main threads of questions. So Claudia, if you would like to start?
Yeah, I can, I can start. So about programs shifting or for women shifting into the I T industry. Not that I would know of, but in order to gain experience, I think what you can do is really. Either ask for internships or for extended, in German, it's praktika, I don't even. I'm sorry that I don't know the word, so that you can get some hands-on experience if this is what you want to do. And I know that for some companies that look for a software tester or a software quality engineer. They might ask for a number of years of experience, but if you go to companies. That offer software testing and quality assurance as a service. They are looking also for young people, for fresh blood, for new resources, for people to help them actually get their work done. And then typically you start in a team working on a testing project. Where you have very experienced people, very young people, and as a team, you solve the problem, you do the job, and this is the way. How we get new people to the experience level that they need if they want to do a project by themselves. So I think in getting into a, into a company that is dedicated to that topic. And I think Raifa, this would be kind of the company that you're running. I would expect, at least in Germany, that's the way we have people that, of course, are new to it, especially if you don't have it at the university. You need to have that training on the job, so that's pretty normal. And with respect to the age limit, I think honestly, I think. Uh i- if somebody answered that way, look for a different company, because thirty-three years is not a. It's ver- still very young and given the fact that a lot of people are entering. Software testing, coming from a different profession, we do have people that tend to be a little older than just uh. Twenty or twenty-five and which is absolutely and perfectly fine. And the the last comment and then I'll shut up, um is it still a good idea to pursue that career despite of A I? Yes, yes. A I will change our jobs. But somebody has to take care that the A I is actually working properly. And that the compo- uh that the A I systems are predicting or clustering or analyzing what they're supposed to do. So the 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 kind of qualification will change, but quality assurance and testing will still be there. They will definitely still need people, human intelligence, to look if the artificial intelligence is doing the job properly.
Thank you, Claudia. Uh Raifa?
Um so I I had a experience actually brought in, uh we we call it U A T, Users Acceptance Testers. So um my team at the time, it was definitely not I T. They came from so many different uh career before. They 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 used to be a nurse. There was a banking, uh bank bankers, and then there's also someone who worked at the E M T. So definitely, they were like everywhere from different part of life and they were thinking to switch career. And so at the time, I was thinking to figure out a way, okay, uh Q A is very, usually is very functional. And then people are really thinking more like the the tech, the tech side of things. Now, when I was thinking about the U A T, the user experience side, so I was proposing at that time to my um. Uh to my supervisor to find people who are actually uh doesn't have any I T background. So that's where we uh trained them. And then now, you know, five years, they are now actually one of, uh some of them are becoming Q A lead. So um things changed post-COVID, there's a lot of opportunities out there. There's no age limitations, although yesterday I had, I I I I saw a very, very uh interesting news. On the New York Times, it was talking about how in um somewhere in Asia countries. Are started to see on the age limit of thirty-five. So thirty-five and then they start reshuffling and then find someone new. No, so that's, you shouldn't worry about it. There's actually a lot of um other countries. Now we have a lot of remote work. So there's a lot of uh platform there that you can actually, you know, get started. There's a lot of platforms, just Google it, anything about freelancing, anything about contracting, s- start small. But always start small, actually. Don't uh think that, you know, okay, there's a two, three years. Apply for it. Who knows? Maybe they see your, your, they see your C V and they they actually want to. You know, uh ask you for an interview. It's good to start always, you know, uh applying. You can apply to five hundred companies and then you probably get ten interviews. It's okay. But you keep, keep going because um one of the thing that actually hindered people is not about. You know, the knowledge that they have about software testing, but actually their their C V. And then how they do the interview. So that's one of the things that I would suggest for people to practice interview. It's very important. It's it's sometimes it's not about the knowledge of software testing. So yeah, practice interview and then review your C V. Ask your friend, ask your um someone who you know in your community, there's, if there's any community of Q A nearby you. Ask them to review your um your C V. And then, you know, try take interview from them. Because it's, yeah, like I said, you know, keep going.
Thank you, Raifa. I I think this is a very good idea. Apply anyway. We know uh by uh experience that. A man who looks at the the vacancy announcement says, oh, I know fifty percent of it. So I will apply, whereas the woman says, I only know fifty percent of it, so I'll I'll skip it this time. So. They are getting with the same amount of knowledge uh and experience. They they get the jobs because they're actually putting themselves out there. So I think this is very important. And as we've heard today, curiosity cannot be put on on a resume. And and that seems to be one of the main skills that you need in in this industry. So um. Again, I encourage everyone to to apply. Uh Millicent, uh some final words from you? And then we'll just take a final round of um some final recommendation from each of you. Uh what you recommend people to do. We we have already uh touched a little bit upon it, but any any final recommendations? And what we will do, we will also, uh we have recorded the webinar and will put it out together with a summary. Uh and we will also then put the links, uh any relevant links, Claudia, Raifa and and Millicent, they have. We'll add that to to the the article. So Millicent?
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to add to the issue of how do you shift uh from other sectors to I C T? Because I haven't, I have that experience and one of the things I see is that you can just develop, look at. Look at your career and develop one or two things that can make your career change easy. You may be having some little bit of things that can help you be able to move very easily. Then uh you can decide on what exactly do you want to do by developing your skills and. If you look at the options, they're quite, uh there are so many in terms of computer science, cybersecurity. Data analysis, there's so much that you can do in that regard. Then something also that is very important is networking, network, network, network. I believe so much in networking. Uh cause through networking, you're able to link with like-minded people who are really in the same industry, who can be able to help you. Then one thing that you cannot run away from is continue developing your skills. Then I just want to mention one of the things that I always believe that has been my mantra is when you desire. Do not retire until you acquire. When you desire, do not retire until you acquire. I've always grown up with that. How much do I desire this thing? I never give up until I acquire. Never let anyone talk you down. So long as you desire, work towards it because opportunity meets preparedness. So I would then encourage us to really follow your heart. If you see you really want to go to the path of I T. The sky will not even limit you. The sky could even be the beginning. Thank you.
Great for that. Uh was that your final recommendation or did you have any other final? Uh thing to say, Millicent, we have two more minutes.
Okay, that's my final, so that I give my others an opportunity to talk.
Okay, great. Thank you. Raifa, any final recommendation here before we close?
Uh so uh actually, I I I put curiosity is a very important tool to have. Uh for us as women and also, you know, never give up, uh even though uh. Uh even though uh the road is quite tough actually. But remember that uh we are very strong and resilient and math, logic or computer robotics.
Oh, that was um. Did we get her back? Okay, Claudia, since we are running short, let's hear your, oh, Raifa, your, your back?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I get a little tough. Yeah, see, now the computer is mad at me because I said that, you know, we're women, we're tough. But yeah, so yeah, uh uh please uh do not lose hope. If, even though you are, you know, uh you're applying and then you, you haven't heard back. Just uh and remember, always poke back the HR. Like maybe in two weeks, you ask them again, you know, um how is my application and this kind of thing? If you had the interview, for example. So yeah, just my uh one tip to get it.
Thank you so much, Raifa. And Claudia, any final recommendation?
Final recommendation, be brave. Don't be afraid. You can do it. Just do it. And grasp the opportunity when it comes along. Keep your curiosity and go.
Great. Thank, thank you, Claudia. This were uh just on time. Uh amazing recommendations and I would like to thank you uh the three of you. Uh Claudia, Millicent and, and Raifa and also Mewa for, for helping us organizing this fantastic. Uh discussion and to all of you uh participants for asking great questions. And uh as uh you leave, please, as Mewa was saying earlier, do please uh respond to our survey. We listen to it and that's how we come up with new topics for our webinar. So please help us out here. Uh and, and thanks everyone. And we'll get back with a, a summary and the recording of, of the session. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, guys.